I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Okonkwo County Planning Commission. This is Monday, August 15th at 5:00. Our first order of business is invocation. Mr. Nix, if you would please.
Pray with me if you will. Heavenly Father, we ask that you please watch over this committee and the planning staff and guide us to wise and safety conscious decisions in support of the public. We also ask that you watch over the county law enforcement, first responders, and other county workers as they perform their duties, that they may return home safely to their families after every shift. And we ask that you please watch over the county and state leaders as they work to make the county and state a better place to live each day. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregatta, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item is the approval of the August 1st meeting, the minutes of that meeting. Do you have your motion?
Second.
Your motion is second. Any corrections, revisions for the minutes? If not, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have public comment for non-agenda items. No one has signed up. So we'll move on to commission member comments. Does anyone have anything to say?
You knew I was. You knew it. I gotta be consistent. Look in your backup material if you will, there's some color photographs, wonderful color photographs, and they are of the Newry Mill renovation down there. I'm not gonna ask for hands of how many people have been down there and looked at it, but it is really quite a renovation that they've done. There's two pages of pictures, and if you even look at some of them, you can still see where they have preserved some of the original brickwork. You can see actually the vines still there. Apparently, it will be open the first part of next year, from what I understand. Going down there, you go through the Newry area down there. It's gonna be interesting how people are gonna get in and out of there safely and on to Route 130. Have you been down there, Mike?
I have not. I keep meaning to go down there. I've not been down in.
Well, it's really, really, very, very well nicely done. If you remember last year, we talked about it, and there was a big tax incentive for people to go down there and do this, and somebody finally came through. But I think it's worthwhile mentioning and letting you look at it. It's really worthwhile to be going down there and taking the time to look at it. One other thing I wanted to mention, I read in a very accurate publication today, very accurate, everybody, a lot of money has been made available for internet in a lot of the rural areas that don't have the internet. And apparently, a big hold on it now from the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, because the maps that they have to where the internet is or where it isn't aren't accurate. So they're going to start going through, developing new maps, and it's gonna be, won't be until about the end of the year that they have these maps done. So it's gonna be delayed a little bit, but you see people around here doing some ditching and whatever, putting some material in there. Those are my comments.
I got something, sir.
Yeah?
If you look at the page adjacent to Mr. Smith's picture there of the Newry Mill, I received this from a friend of mine that's in the real estate business. He's heard us talking about price of housing in the county and some of the accusations that we receive that, you know, any things we do for development standards or setbacks or numerous things that, you know, just will continue to add to the cost of houses. I'll read it to you. It says, "For your information, there are currently no single-family, three-bedroom, two-houses, two-bathroom homes for sale for less than $200,000 in Okonkwo County, at least not on an active MLS report at this moment. Only six three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family homes, $200,000, $250,000 in Okonkwo County." There are 18 three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family homes between $250,000 and $300,000 in Okonkwo County. The average first-time homebuyer price point is now $250,000 plus. In our last meeting, we did the average median income for the county, I think on top end was $60,000. I don't have those numbers right in front of me. Could afford a $90,000 to $100,000 house, can anybody recall that? Those numbers are close. I understand things we do are gonna add costs to a home, but this right here, the homes are already $100,000 out of those people's range. So I think our focus should be more on preserving the property in our county, curtailing some of the building, and maybe that would be an incentive for some government officials or government entities or something to come in and institute, put some low-income housing in. But I, from my personal self, don't see that anything we could do would get in the way of a homebuyer that's already priced out of the market. These homes are priced in this range because people buy them. And I hope y'all kinda look into that whenever we bring up some things here a little bit from the subdivision committee. We know, we're well aware that they're gonna add costs to construction, but we're not affecting the low-income or median-income people because they are already out of the game. That's my comment, sir.
Dave.
I'd like to put in my plug for a partnership with Anderson County for a new sewer treatment plant in District 5. I've talked about that before. I think that's very important to development along I-85 corridor, as in keeping with our comprehensive plan, as Mr. Smith likes to talk about. So I think we need to work hard between now and September 12th, see if we can get a $10 million grant for that. I'd like to encourage that to move along, like to encourage all the citizens to participate that and become informed about it. If you have any questions, you can give one of us a call. That's it.
Mike Johnson.
Just as a follow-up to what Pat was saying, we are very low on inventory, but we're low on inventory across the board on all price points. The interesting part is, is we've sold about as many homes in that $150,000 to $250,000 range as we've ever sold. So far, year-to-date, we've sold 174 homes from $150,000 to $250,000. Prior to the boom, 2018, 2019, we were selling around 190,000 to 195,000, so we're selling about the same number of homes that we were selling then. But we are seemingly struggling through inventory. The biggest difference is, is in 2018, you were buying almost a 2,000-square-foot home for $194,000, and today you're buying a 1,500-square-foot home for the same price. So buying a much smaller house. But again, as far as the limited inventory, it's kind of in all different price points. And it's not that the inventory's not there, it's that it gets scooped up quickly so it doesn't ever show.
Mr. Alden.
Hey, I just wanted to mention a couple things. One, about Fair Play, and the other about Sewer. But the Fair Play Community Development Corporation is, you know, in the process of continuing to get organized. You know, that, in my mind, is a good model for other communities within Okonkwo County to use, some of the same things that they've done. For example, the county paid for them to have a master plan done, and from that came a steering committee, and from the steering committee came the Community Development Corporation. So, you know, they're getting organized, they're gonna help with trying to, well, they intend to help try to remove the old-school building that's in their community over there. And so I say their main objective right now is to, you know, show some action, show some support for community development. And then the other thing is, and I tell you, I've been reading the newspaper, and that's where I've been getting some of this information on Sewer, but my understanding is the Sewer South project is about to be set out for bids, which means, you know, they have all the engineering documents ready to be let so that people can bid on it. The other thing about Sewer is, my understanding is there's an ongoing study right now called Sewer Basin Study in the Fair Play area. And then, I'm not sure about this, maybe someone can fill me in, whether it be James or Mr. Root, but if I remember correctly, during the building of the budget for this fiscal year, there was talk about spending money to do some engineering on Sewer for, from Exit 1 on I-85 up Highway 11, some amount of distance up Highway 11. Haven't heard anything else about that. I'm wondering if that is still in the budget for the county, or if that's something that just went by the wayside.
I don't recall budget and a budget appropriation for that. And of course, the county's not in the sewer business, so anything at this juncture, barring anything with Anderson or what have you, has been in conjunction with the sewer authority. So they've certainly done a basin study over there, they've done work, all the engineering work so far, and what I know is planned, is two, 85, one and two, and perhaps, you know, there's forecasting to get to four, but that's still.
I was actually just watching some video of, you know, the budget building process that was taking place, and I may have misunderstood what they were saying, but I got the wrong idea, I guess.
So the last update I gave you guys was June 30th, and we gave the links for the Fair Play Townville Area Sewer Basin Study that does not, it's not finished yet, but they're working on it. So we gave you guys the links to the survey about needs, and then the link to the design area.
I took the survey, and I went to some of the community meetings that they had and that kind of thing, so I'm aware of that. But this other thing that I brought up, I wasn't really sure about, was I thought there was money in budget for doing some expenditure for engineering work. Nice stuff on that, I guess. Thanks, James. That's nice, Mr. Root.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bassi.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to reiterate what Pat was saying. I also talked to a realtor today that said basically the same thing. Houses out there that are cheaper that never get listed on your MLS because they're scooped up so fast, they don't have a chance to be listed. So there are some out there that are just few and far between. Most of them are in the range of $200,000 to $300,000. And it, you know, I don't know that we have the authority to tell people, you gotta build cheaper houses, because then you get into looking at how they're built. I mean, they might can build a cheaper house, but how structurally sound is it gonna be? So that's some more things we need to work on and get more information from our realtors and some of our developers.
And we have in your builders.
Find out what we can do to help them achieve that goal of building. So I don't know if you call them cheaper homes or what, because the way the building materials are now, it's, there's no such thing as a cheap home anymore. Building materials are outrageously priced, and so they can only do what they can. And everybody's telling me that $200,000, that's pretty much the bottom line on most places, unless it's a home already built. And they can get it cheap enough where they can sell it for $150,000 to $175,000, but you never hear about those, because like I said, they're scooped up so fast, there's so many bids on them, and they never hit the MLS. So we don't know about them as often. So some more things we need to work on and get information from other people where we can make better decisions on what we need to do as a planning commission. So we shall go on. Staff comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The big piece that I have for you guys tonight is the several pages we discussed on them. So this was something you guys asked for in the beginning of the month. Basically, looking back, I know we wanted to go back a little bit further. 2015 is when we started using the online permitting. So without going back into the dark, I have to find in the paper files, this was what I was able to go back to, was 2015. And the number of subdivision applications and the number of lots or units that were created out of that. There's a couple of caveats to this, though, that I do want you guys to be aware of. The first, this does not include anything that was permitted as a commercial building. So there's four big ones that were not subdivision applications, that were all already done, that were done as just a commercial building permit, and that is 2015, the first phase of the year, 2019 epic, 2020 Newry, and then 2019 was the Bridges, which is another two subdivision, not subdivision, but housing. So there are a couple other big pieces that were from 15, 19, and 20 that are not counted in this and not captured in this, but do have substantial number of units that were created.
And you say not counted on that 2019 MF, is that not multifamily?
It is. That is Hartwell Building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's some multifamily in here, but not some.
Yeah, okay. And I highlighted that one, just to highlight that that was one that was done as a subdivision, I think the first one of the larger multifamilies that was under a subdivision, which is what we would do them all now as.
I have a question, Mr. Chisholm, please. Okay, this isn't related exactly to this, but with all the subdivisions that have been permitted and, you know, I'm just wondering, do y'all have like a map that shows where all this activity is taking place? Because it's really hard for me to get my head around it. And I'm like, if I had a map of the county with some red dots on it, or, you know, green dots or whatever, showing where these subdivisions are going up right now, it would really be helpful.
There is not of the active projects. There is an interactive map on GIS that is the subdivisions map. So you can search by the subdivision came there, and it will pop up. We can look at doing active.
I don't know if other commissioners feel like we need that, or we'd like to ask for it, but to me, if we saw a map that just showed where all this activity is taking place right now, it would help me. And maybe I just need to go to James on my own and him.
What are you gonna do about it?
He showed the, we saw those applications a few meetings ago, and you can pretty much guarantee they are within a half-mile, three-quarter mile of wherever Sewer is. So pretty much.
Well, that doesn't help you that much. Anyway, I don't know, maybe y'all don't agree, but it'd be great.
I agree with that. We could, it wouldn't, if you got, can get that information, it would be helpful.
So we have the individual ones. We would need to put together a kind of a map that could be updated either quarterly or maybe every, we'll figure out a timeframe. And even if it's just putting a dot.
I was gonna say, even if you just put a dot or a little stamp on.
Yeah, I don't think it would be too hard. It'd just be something I can talk to Lisa about, if we can figure out. She'll know the better way to do it, so whatever I come up with, there'll be a better way, I'm sure. And we can go from there and figure out a good way. Yes, sir.
Jim, thanks for coming up with this list. I appreciate that. We all do. It is informative. So I think from what, you tell me if I'm wrong, I think from what we can glean from this is, there is a, in the last three or four years, a significant uptick in the number of subdivisions going in. Is that correct?
I think that's a reasonable, yeah.
I think that was when I asked for this, that was just what I wanted to see, was the data. See if that was the case. So, now we know.
Is number 24, James, is that where it says 337 units on 50 acres? Would that be one of the university ones down there?
How many, 24, would you?
On the year 2021?
That is the pier.
Okay.
That is one phase of the pier. That's the pier north. So that is a, the single-family and townhouses on the north side.
Well, I'd like to bring to the point, gentlemen, that in 2022, you can see the acreage of the life property, 974 acres. That question has come up, is how much land we are losing. Again, I'd be willing to say 90% of that was forest or farmland. And y'all know that's my, my goal on this committee is to somehow in a preserve land in this county. And that's very, that 974.98 is very disheartening to me to see that number. So 983 in 2021, again, I bet it's forest land, farmland. We can't, as an agricultural person and forestry and the beauty of this county, we can't sustain that growth many more years. And I'd like, in the future, some support. And my agenda is to preserve farmland and our beauty of our county, because that's just an astounding number. It's gonna be, continue to be a strain on our infrastructure. I envision if this Sewer South thing on 59 comes up, that's a bunch of land down there that's gonna be vulnerable to be developed. And that's just, just, in my word, this is very heartbreaking.
Anything else, James?
Nothing.
Okay. Let's go into item number eight, staff, I mean, curb cuts, exoneratory lanes, ordinance revision, Highway 123. There was no one signed up to speak on this particular subject. Mr. Smith.
We have Mr. Root here tonight.
Oh, Mr. Root. You wanna say something?
Mr. Smith has something to say that I would need to respond to.
No, I don't have anything to say about it. I was waiting for you, David, to answer what you wanted to say.
I was given a copy of y'all's proposed addition to Chapter 32, Section 222 of the Okonkwo County Code, Section 810, which would essentially make prior to preliminary plan approval being received from an applicant, they would need to go to the DOT first. That's the essence of it. Only thing, in the particular wording of the ordinance I thought about, and James and I talked about, was removing the coordinates out of there, just because of city of Seneca, obviously by way of annexation, that could be a shifting line. You wouldn't wanna necessarily put that in an ordinance. You may just wanna say the city of Seneca's boundaries. The, that's just a practical matter. The legal issues, I didn't find anything, and I dug deep, dove deep into Chapter 57, the regulations for the Department of Transportation. I found nothing that was legally prohibitive of this. And you all know the Department of Transportation is charged with the safe, efficient movement of goods and services along the state highway system, including the federal routes that are included therein. So this is right within their baby way, because I understand it from representatives from the DOT, this is something that they're game to do, and it makes good sense to do. It's gonna be, in my mind, good for the public, good for the planning staff, for to have it on the front end. So that's the essence of it. I don't wanna veer into the policy. I don't think there's anything that's, you know, policy prohibitive. I would make one comment, and I don't think it's a real concern at this stage, but when you think about 23, or 123 being isolated from the other state routes, that may be commercial corridors, I think they've been called before. Someone could cry that this is an equal protection issue, that we're in the same class of folks on another state highway, but we're being treated this similarly. I don't think this is an onerous burden. It's not a heavy burden for them to do, and it's helpful, but they could say that. I don't think it fits, because this area of road is very different from pretty much every other area of road in the county. In the future, it could become, so you would certainly want to make sure that other commercial corridors are treated the same. So I'm not saying that's something that is a constitutional impediment at this time, but anytime that something smacks of it, you wanna be mindful of it. So that's all. Dug into it, didn't see anything from a legal standpoint that would prohibit it. Sounds like good policy, but I leave that to y'all and the folks who work it every day. That's all I had.
Let me make a motion here. I move that the Planning Commission accept the curb cut revisions suggested by Mr. Root, and that he incorporate them and forward them to the county council for their consideration.
Second.
Let me start off a little bit of a discussion. This came down to us from a meeting at the Planning and Economic Development Committee more than a year ago for us to take a look at this. When we brought this up, we sent out letters to all of the owners of property of undeveloped parcels along 123, and James, correct me, you had one telephone call from someone?
Yes.
Other than that, we didn't hear from them. So we have met with Ben Olson of the South Carolina DOT, and he said that this had worked or was working positively in Greenville County, and Spartanburg was seriously considering incorporating something like this also. So with that in mind, I think we need to move forward with this thing, and let's get it done. It's been more than a year.
Dave.
Just a question. Why are we only doing between Seneca City limit on the east side and the county line versus not doing Seneca City limit to Westminster City limit as well? Was that discussed?
I think I can answer that.
Just curious.
I think I can answer that. Paul Kane came down with this suggestion, and he was very specific from where these coordinates are right there. That's the area that he wanted done. So with that in mind, that's where we went with it. We didn't expand it any other direction.
He's the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to jump in.
He's the, he's the Planning and Economic Development Committee Chair.
He's chairman of the Planning and Economic Development Committee, and the rest of them, you know, supported it, so it was a 3-0 vote.
Yeah, because they said so. Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman, but that, that, what Mr. Nix brings up does go right to the point that I was making about the equal protection concern. If there is a part of a state highway within the county that may be close to this class for equal protection concerns, that's probably that other stretch, you know, the more westerly stretch, 123. So something to consider. I still don't think, I still think they're very dissimilar, so you can make the argument if somebody sued the county, which I can't see happening on this, but you get sued for good, bad, no reasons. That, it could be for an equal protection type issue like that, so you may wanna give consideration to expanding it, if you're gonna, it didn't have to happen right now, it could be just like this, and move this one forward like Mr. Smith moves.
Right now, do we understand that these run parallel to each other, that an applicant's going to the DOT, and he's also coming to planning, and those things are running simultaneously as opposed to one running in front of the other?
Yeah, so this is addressing the issue of them getting approval from us prior to going to DOT. So if there's a piece of property that's broken up into multiple pieces, and DOT doesn't look at it first, they're required to grant access to all three of those new properties. So they would have to, they just can't deny somebody ingress to a state road. So they would still be able to apply simultaneously. We would just go through everything other than that curb cut, and we would get comments back to them while those are going on. We'd let DOT determine how that entry should work.
Mr. Smith, would you consider amending your motion to make a suggestion that we carry the other corridor as well under this? They consider the other corridor as well. There doesn't seem to be any good reason why it's not on there, other than somebody came up with an idea and said, "Bring it to us."
At my age, I'd have to think about these things.
That could be covered under a separate motion, Mike. I mean, that wouldn't be mine.
Yeah, I would like to stick with this original that, that they wanted from the PED Committee, you know.
Even though Mr. Root is saying that it could cause a concern for the county.
Let's let them deal with it at the county, county, county council level when it goes up there, because I'm sure David will, I mean, Mr. Root. Let's let them deal with it at the county, county, county council level, when it goes up there, because I'm sure David will, I mean, Mr. Root will, you know, mention that to them. I'd like to go with what they originally asked for.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we go to item nine, sidewalks allowed in right-of-way. Is that yours, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, it is. I'm a popular guy tonight. David, take it away.
And I was directed by the committee also to look at this. And James, can you put up the one that I sent to you? So, as I, I don't remember if I noted it to this commission previously when it came up, or if it was to a committee, council committee. But I had a concern the way it was phrased when it came out of the Planning Commission, and the essence of that framework was, within a county right-of-way, you're gonna allow sidewalks, all right, most jurisdictions do, but that sidewalk was not gonna be owned by the county, so essentially, and ostensibly, you're gonna have a right-of-way within a right-of-way with another entity owning and being responsible for maintenance, and of course, there's gonna be appurtenances, things that fall off of the sidewalk, meaning things that are adjacent to the sidewalk, that are gonna impact the county right-of-way. And that inner relationship, because it's, I would just say conflated, is gonna be messy. For lack of a better term, I've not seen it done that way, and maybe I'm just being old, and like, that's not the way to do it, because I've not seen it done that way, but I can think of a lot more problems happening like this, instead of the way I drafted it, which, you're getting into the game of sidewalks, so it's increasing county liability, which is what I'm here to, to decrease. But if you're gonna do it, I think this is better, because this has a county right-of-way, it's gonna be a county sidewalk, quote, "But the entity that is proposing to have a sidewalk within the county right-of-way will enter into an agreement." We've done agreements like this otherwise, for other maintenance issues and things that are gonna be within county right-of-ways, where they're gonna be required to maintain the sidewalk, they're gonna hold the county harmless. And if they do not maintain it, then the county has a clear right to do the required maintenance, to get it to avoid the tripping falls, and avoid, you know, pedestrian and vehicle hazards, things like this, and then charge the cost of that back to the entity that initially signed up for. That framework, to me, works a lot better for, and that's what I outlined in what you see on the screen.
Smith?
I move that the Planning Commission accept the sidewalk revisions suggested by Mr. Root, and that he incorporate them in Chapter 26-3, and forward them to the county council for their consideration.
Second.
And if I could, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to tag on before you start the discussion, I would want to, assuming this passes, or if it does pass, talk to Kyle Reed and talk to Ben Olson, and probably talk about the DOT, just to make sure on a technical level that we're good, that nothing else needs to be added into this to beef it up. Put within the ordinance, said the designs would be consistent with the DOT, similar to what y'all had, consistent with the DOT minimum design criteria, and also the standard drawings. The DOT has a whole myriad of different standard drawings, and they apply to sidewalks of all types, different types of variety, and all different types of terrain, and I think, from my perspective, that's sufficient to reference those. But I'm not an engineer, and it's not, you know, that's not my field, so I'd wanna just check it off with Mr. Olson and Kyle Reed, if y'all move this out. And if they say, "No, you gotta do something, it's a big material change," then I'd wanna bring it back. But if it's just something minor, then yes, I'd draft it up in an ordinance and take it straight to council. Does that make sense?
William?
So actually, I was on that, on that subcommittee, and we actually met with Kyle Reed. And Kyle Reed said, "This is a terrible idea." He said, "This shouldn't, under no circumstances, be done because of the liability that would be faced by the county." And the reason that he really referenced was, is that he said, "On county roads," and believe me, I'm a big proponent, I was the one who was pushing for this initially, but what Kyle had said is, is that you have one little small slab of concrete that gets tilted or wonky-jawed, or whatever you wanna call it, and elevated by an inch, that it becomes a trip hazard. And the county can't afford to go out with a, and purchase a quarter yard of concrete in a big old truck. They're purchasing 10 yards at a time, so they're trying to build an 80 or 90-foot stretch. They can't do a four-foot stretch. But some little old lady has complained four times, getting to her mailbox, that this is a trip hazard. What liability does that put on the county, when somebody has complained four times that this, that this right here is a trip hazard, I've fallen now? And the county says, "We're gonna get to it when there's 80 feet that's needed." That was Kyle's concern. Now, my question, in coming back at that time, was, what if we made it private? What if we made it ownership of the entity, the HOA, or the organization, or the developer? Kyle said, "It needs to be outside of the right-of-way," which was one of our big pushes for private roads, and having it limited, limited right-of-way there, because we could put it outside the right-of-way. But if we're concerned that the county is taking over stuff that wasn't originally theirs, whether it be under private roads, or whether it be under some situation, if the county takes over property as to their responsibility, this creates a huge liability, because if, as Mr. Root just said, if the developer, the organization responsible, doesn't fix it, it's the county's responsibility to fix it. And the county can't take three bags of concrete and fix a four-foot area, they're looking at fixing an eight-foot area.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I did speak with Kyle, and spoke with Mac before him, who was his predecessor back when, so seven, six, seven years ago. And they do not want the, the county to be in the sidewalk business, and I get it, because that's an extra burden on what they do. Their normal frame of operations is roads, and, and doing things in bulk. If you're gonna put the county in the sidewalk business, then I think this is a better way to do it. Certainly, if you have sidewalks allowable outside the county right-of-way, we're not even having this discussion, because it's not germane to this, there's no change necessary. But if it's gonna be in the right-of-way, this is a better way to do it. Kyle didn't have an opposition when I spoke with him, wrapped back around with him on Friday about it, so, I mean, that's the most recent intel I've got on it. But yeah.
So you're reasonably comfortable with what you've worded?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with what I'm worded. That's the best way to do it, if there's gonna be a sidewalk within the county right-of-way. I think you're gonna face this, folks, developers are not gonna flop down a sidewalk on an old county road. That's just not gonna be the situation we're facing. You're gonna, I can't imagine that happening, but we'll just say nine times out of 10, it's gonna be in a new development, when it's being built out, and then you have a financially responsible entity who is gonna step up, and is gonna be, gonna have to be responsible for the maintenance and repair the sidewalk, under an agreement with the county. If they don't, still a county. Sidewalks, if the county could maintain it, charge the cost back to the developer. If someone trips and falls, county's gonna be liable. Yes, it's a problem I'd rather that we don't have, but that agreement would also bind the entity who developed, most likely, to hold the county harmless and defend the county. So that would be part of the agreement.
So this is basically giving, uh, housing developments, subdivision, whatever you wanna call them, the ability to put a sidewalk in that 15-foot on each side of the road that they have to have, that the county's gonna, that says their right-of-way. And it's, and the county's gonna, if something happens, county has, if they don't fix it, the county has to fix it, then the county's gonna take over the road, more than likely, in most cases, and down the line, and then they're gonna be totally responsible for the sidewalk. So...
So, yes, in part. So, the way that the agreement would be structured is, is the sidewalk within the county right-of-way, so it's a county sidewalk, it's not privately owned sidewalk, so that some entity would have an easement within the county easement. It's a county sidewalk, but for it to happen, the entity who wants to do the subdivision like this, and have sidewalks, which heretofore haven't been, they've not been able to do on a, on a county road, they would have to step up, agree to be responsible for the maintenance, agree to hold the county harmless, meaning if the county got sued, they're gonna fit the bill for it. And if they didn't maintain it, then the county would have the right to then do the maintenance, and charge that entity back for the cost of that maintenance. So that's, that's the paradigm that I've put up here, or that's up there.
That's even after the county, if the county was to take over that road, like they have in other subdivision areas? So, who's gonna be responsible for the sidewalk at that point?
You're gonna have to have, for it to happen, if the county were to jump into a place that had a sidewalk already, I don't wanna pick out a subdivision, there's gonna have to be an entity, and that's, there's condition precedent to this happening, is there's gonna, financially responsible entity that's gonna step up to be able to agree to it. Is there a perfect solution to it? I don't know, and if the county, like I say, if the county's gonna get in the sidewalk business, then figure out a way to do it.
I've got a couple of questions. One, Mr. Root, you said the right to take it over, but there's also the obligation that comes with that, and the financial obligation that comes with that. Again, trying to fix a four-foot section, as opposed to a 40-foot section, does the county have the budget to come in and do small maintenance when something goes awry from a public standpoint? It may be that we wanna take, not have it on county roads, just have it on private roads, is, is one way of allowing us to get sidewalks, but taking the liability more off of the county than what we're saying to be able to do it in a county right-of-way. Second question I do have for Mr. Root. Under the private section, it has the all caps down there at the bottom, "The sidewalk located in the plat shall be private, not owned by." Tell me why that's not up in the county section?
Because we took that, that was what was in, the version that was given to me, and I'm just gonna repeat the framework again. This, in the public right-of-way, this is going to be a county sidewalk, under the paradigm that I drafted, so that language is, is not accurate, would not be...
County sidewalk being maintained by somebody else.
Under an agreement, and so it's not the county taking over it if these people fail to maintain it, but the county can, under the agreement, would have the, the opportunity, if they fail to maintain it, the county could step in and maintain it. Hopefully, this is a truly financially responsible entity, and then they would have to pay the cost of it. So it's not a private right-of-way, a private sidewalk within the county right-of-way, period, that the county later takes over. It is a public right-of-way, public sidewalk within there, that a private entity has a responsibility to maintain. So similar to the way y'all put it forward in the public, but you don't have this amalgamation of interests, where you have a private entity having a right within the public right-of-way. So, so it's not the county taking it over at some point in time, it's just that the county has ability to maintain that four-foot section, what happened.
It just sounds like bad business, as Kyle is saying, don't get in the sidewalk business.
Go ahead.
My question would be, if we go and put this responsibility on said company that built the sidewalk, plus 10 years down the road, are there gonna be a timeframe or something, and we go hunt them down, and they've changed names, they file for bank records, they don't exist anymore? You know, some of these companies are fly-by-night, and they do, this is the reason they do this, is so they're not held for liability for things they've done in the past. It could be the same people doing the same operation, just under a different name, so how do we get around that?
I've been doing this for a quarter of a century, and a lot of the time, I'd spend on construction defect cases, when developing entities did the development, and you could not find them two years later, when everyone, you know, when the suits were happening. So I'm fully aware of that, but just to be clear, I'm not a policy person. I'm not advocating for sidewalks in county right-of-ways. As I stated at the outset, that would, is gonna increase the county liability. I'm here to decrease the county liability. If you're going to do this, if you're gonna advocate that the county be in the sidewalk business, which is the way this came to me, I believe that the way that I've drafted here is better than having this private sidewalk within the public right-of-way. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I answered one question I went without reading, so...
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appused.
I support that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just as stated before, when I talk to Kyle again about it, talk to Ben Olson, make sure it's clean, and if there's no, if they don't recommend a material, a big change, then I'll draft it in an ordinance and take it to council for their consideration. If they say, "Hey, this is the technical ass," and I suspected it'd be from Ben, because I have talked to Kyle, Ben Olson, if they say, "No, this is what you've gotta add, this stuff, and it's meaty stuff," then it's gonna come, I'm gonna come back here with that. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number 10. I've noticed a couple of people came in after the meeting, I was gonna see if any of those wanted to see on the subdivision development standards.
I actually just wanted to let you know that the whole audio was not...
Ma'am, if you'll come up to the front and state your name, where we can hear you, better?
My wife texted on that, too, and she said, she just texted that it's working now, too.
It's working now, uh, thank you. It was disappointing information, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Vassie, would you like to?
Sure.
Just state your name, please, where we can hear you for the record.
So Clay Vassie, I am a broker in charge for Allen Tate. I live on Delphi Drive in Seneca. As far as, I know you had some concerns with the growth and the number of acres that were being maybe destroyed or removed because of some of the developments. We are seeing a lot of developments come into the area, and to answer your question, the growth over the past 10 years, three years, is substantial and gonna continue to climb. It's part of my job to keep in track of what's going on with the rest of the state and states around us, as well as those counties. And I've got that experience because of the opportunity that I've had to sell in Columbia, as well as in Charlotte, and then have licenses in Georgia and North Carolina. So what I'm seeing is, the areas that have had the most growth over the past, from five years ago until five years ago, they have put moratoriums on opportunities to continue to build neighborhoods in those areas. It's pushing those neighborhoods out. By pushing those neighborhoods out, they're coming out into this area. I've done a lot of research and have worked closely with some of the bigger builders in the area. They do have lots of plans to continue to mush, to push into this area. Pendleton has put a moratorium on an opportunity to continue to build homes that will be under $250,000, mainly townhomes, and that restricts a lot of what our working class is looking for in their first-time homes, or in their forever homes. Our biggest problem we have right now, to me, isn't that we're putting in too many neighborhoods, but we truly have nothing to sell. And I'll tell you where it comes from, is that the opportunity for what we would call, I guess, millennials, which is the largest group of purchasers in our county right now, they don't have anything to buy, because the other generations aren't moving, because they've got nowhere to go to. And if I were to say that we need to start considering putting more neighborhoods in, and start adding to what is amazing in our county, I'd say we need to consider doing a neighborhood of a 55-plus. I'd say we need to do a specific neighborhood style, that we can move what I'm gonna call boomers, right, into, that would allow us the opportunity to continue to grow our neighborhood opportunities. Obviously, I'm always available, if you guys ever want to chat about anything real estate, and have any questions about this map that you're wanting to put together, I'd love to put it together. I'd love to see it myself, and just see kinda where we are, and so I'd be glad to help with that. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vassie. Okay, we'll go into the discussion. Mr. Smith, go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Big guy.
I'll tell you what. Pat asked me to report on our subcommittee meeting that we had last week. I was there, Pat was there, Gary was there. It was done on YouTube, in this setting right here. It was open to the public. Initially, the concern was, how do we protect agriculture land? And that morphed into a subdivision effort, in looking at, what can we do about some of the subdivisions that we have on the, in the future? So, we started looking at high-density subdivisions in control-free areas. I'm gonna mention four broad concepts here, and just let you think about them, and then come to the next meeting, and hopefully it'll be put on the agenda, and maybe you can have a little bit further discussion about the whole thing. Obviously, the key to high-density subdivisions is sewer. The sewer is primary if you're gonna have high-density subdivisions. There are four concepts, again, that we talked about. First one was additional road ingress and egress into these access areas. And this is something that we need to start looking at. Depending on the condition of the road that these subdivisions are feeding into, is it a curved road, is it a very narrow road, is it a very hilly road? So these are something that maybe needs to be reviewed. So these are something that maybe needs to be reviewed. Affordable housing, uh, how do you define affordable housing? How do you define workforce housing? Uh, it goes on and on. And so what we talked about was high-density housing, townhouses or less than one-half-acre lots, that you were going to have a certain amount of affordable, uh, housing in that area. We threw out numbers of thirty to fifty lots, you're gonna have to have five percent of that was gonna have to be workforce or affordable housing, and then we kept scaling it up just as a point of discussion. The third topic we talked about and we accepted was green space. Using a sliding scale of to, of total housing to determine green space, and again, we were just throwing out some numbers between the three of us, thirty to fifty lots, you were gonna have one acre of green space, fifty-one to a hundred lots, about one and a half acres of green space. And it was gonna be a single area, not broken up into different areas, and that was gonna be usable by the residents. We also talked about, perhaps, talking about putting a tree in the front and/or the backyard of each one of these houses of a certain caliber size and a certain species, and so that it, uh, is preserved and put into the covenants. Uh, the fourth item that we talked about was, depending on the size of the development, some additional side setback requirements for a certain number of houses, so that you didn't have all the houses looking the same spacing as you went down the road, a straight road. I'm reminded of, uh, Billy Joel's song about Allentown, and, uh, what happened after the Second World War with one house after another house after another, all looking alike, and interspersed these lots throughout the subdivision. So with that in mind, those are the four areas that we looked at, just think about it. Something to come back to, uh, to perhaps ju, think about at the next meeting. And with that, I'd like to close and, uh, move that, uh, I'd like to make this movement, that, uh, we discontinue the subdivision subcommittee or agriculture land subcommittee, and that it be discontinued. Nobody, nobody wants to second that we discontinue the subdivision subcommittee?
Second.
Oh.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Apologies. Uh, well, I, since we're still on the subject of some of these divisions and housing development, I was looking at all the zoning classifications we have in this county, and every single one has a density, uh, portion of their, uh, their zoning classification, with the exception of the so-called, um-
Control-free.
Control-free, that's that word I was trying to think of. Uh, 'cause it's not control-free, it has controls in it, so, uh, but it's just, I mean, some of them are half acres, some of them are two dwellings per acre, some of them are one dwelling per five acres. Uh, I mean, I don't understand why, since the so-called control-free zone anyway has restrictions to it to start with, why we could not add a density section in that. Number one, it needs to, that name needs to be changed because it's not control-free, but, um, but I just think we need, you know, we, that's one way we could look at this and add something to that, um, there's, you know, one house per half acre, one house, or two houses, or whatever you, whatever you wanna do, or one per five acres, like some of the other ones. Uh, and we need to send up another notice, at least in my opinion, to council to change the name of that particular zoning classification, cause it is, uh, not correct. So, but if there's nothing else-
I, I got a question, gentlemen. Uh, the subdivision subcommittee was charged with coming up with some suggestions, and we just made some, and we did not have a single question. That concerns me, uh-
Well, I have questions, but he said he wanted to wait until the next meeting, for us to look at it, wait until the next meeting.
Well, do you want, does anybody got any clarification? I mean, we give you some topics, I mean, do you clear, are they clear, or, you know, what we are suggesting, or, uh, do you might, you know, any?
I thought they were clear. I mean, I like the, I think the ingress and egress thing is pretty important. Uh, I mean, they have some concerns with green space and things like that, because it may require an HOA or something like that, that increased costs, so, you know, there's lots of questions, but I, I thought it was clear. Look forward to talking about it.
Good. Now, we are talking about control-free. We aren't talking about any of the other, uh, classifications of zoning. That's all we're talking about, is control-free.
Is there a reason for that?
Well, yes, because that is where your agriculture land is, is in control-free, and that's what we started out with, was agriculture land, and then it kinda morphed into, let's look at subdivisions.
What about the agriculture land that's in agriculture?
You mean zoned agriculture? That's not gonna be, that's not being developed as intensely as control-free area, Mike.
Control-free area of agland, so it does address the agland in that control-free?
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah, you've got it.
And the density in agriculture district is one dwelling per acre.
There's a, there's an education thing about zoning too that maybe needs to be.
You were talking about telling them they have to plant a tree of a specific type. Why not, don't cut the darn tree down to start with that's already on the land, quit clear-cutting the land.
I think, I think, let, let Pat help you.
I've seen that for years, and I would love to leave that big majestic oak tree, but if you disturb any soil within a hundred foot of that tree, it's gonna die.
Then, then that's where you, and I know other counties have this, if you do that, then you have to plant another tree of the same-
Yeah, but then you, then we're getting back to cost, and I'm sure we'll get, uh, question on this.
It hasn't stopped other counties from doing it.
But you're talking about some, you know, a big tree, it could cost eight or ten thousand dollars to cut it down. I mean, somebody buys that lot with that big oak tree, and it dies five years after they buy their house, because you just, I'm with you, I, I would love the trees to be there permanently, but you just real, you just gotta be realistic about it, and, uh, um-
Well, that would make the developer or whoever take it a little easier, saying, wait a minute, I gotta leave this tree, let's not disturb this tree.
Well, you go, look at the, uh-
Our oak trees will take a lot more-
Right.
Than what maples and stuff that they grow right on top of the ground. But, I mean, other counties do this, it hasn't slowed down development, hasn't hurt development. The developers are not running away because they can't clear-cut the land anymore, they're just adapting to it and building around it.
I agree with you one hundred percent. What we don't know is, is what happened five years down the road. I mean, did that tree die? And then somebody's gotta, you know, replace that tree or, or move it.
Who was first?
Hey, I don't know.
Go ahead, Mike.
James, you've had experience with this from where you came from, could you offer a little bit of?
So, my previous experience with tree ordinances was, the fine is often worth paying if it's low enough to cut down the trees, uh, if it's eavesdropping. And then also, whatever the mitigation is, if the mitigation isn't severe enough that it, uh, makes an impact, then it's not, uh, something people take as serious. So, you can look, Georgetown is, where I came from, is reviewing and increasing the tree projections, uh, just based on what they've seen through practicality and people developing in those areas. Uh, there's other places like Charleston that have much stricter tree ordinances that are, um, that, that have been restricted based on the severity of what they enforce and how they're forced.
Offense?
Two questions, but one clarification, so there, the developer is paying the fine and incorporating that into the cost of the product?
Yes.
So, increased product by, when we're talking about the trees. Tell me again, I missed something apparently, because we were talking about that the, was it, did I understand that the objective is to protect the agland? Was the, and then we came up with ways to protect the agland, is that correct?
Well, can I comment on that, Mike?
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Uh, I, I was, I was initially asked to be on this committee to protect agland, farmland, and I got sucked into this subdivision thing. And, and the more I've learned and the more I've heard, uh, you know, they're gonna build houses, they're gonna build houses somewhere, so I'm getting out of the subdivision business, and I'm going back to my focus of protecting land in this county, and I'm gonna be pretty adamant that I do that. So, uh, that's kind of, you know, we were asked to come up with something, you know, we got subdivision, we have to deal with, and we got proposed ones we have to deal with. Can't do anything about that, so, future, I am very adamantly going to protect agland in this county.
If you wanna start a protect the agland committee, I'm happy to join you on the protect the agland. I'm a big fan of protecting the agland.
Thank you.
I, I'm just, I'm, when we talk about affordable housing, that typically means density. Density is a, is kind of only juxtaposed to agland. We have an ag zoning criteria that's one house per acre, which, again, shows that low density is kind of that more protection of agland. So, I look forward to a discussion on this, 'cause I'm not sure on the, the density that we're talking about making it more dense, um, and then we're talking about moving some bigger setbacks. I'm, I'm looking forward to how we pull that together, because I think it can potentially be done, but I don't know if you should go into the heading of protect agland, 'cause I don't think these things do that.
They don't, but we gotta-
It just morphed into that, it just happened. It's like the caterpillar and the butterfly thing, it just happened. And when we started looking at some of these, how are you gonna protect agland? I mean, you don't wanna mention, you know, we have this reluctance to zone, so how do you protect it with all of these subdivisions that are coming in? And so we thought, well, let's try to make the subdivisions at least very nice looking.
Any, any-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussions on this item?
Fifteen minutes.
Boy, that was fast. Okay, we'll go to item number eleven, the junkyards. Does anyone have anything? You were sent, if I'm not mistaken, that's the Pickens County, uh, junkyard ordinance? You were sent that in backup? Does anyone have anything that they would like to add to the, the way we were gonna do the ordinance?
Yeah, I might get up at bat again.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I know you love hearing from me. Remember, a few meetings ago, we approved that we were gonna do this in an outline format and try to get through some of the difficult parts before we got into the actual text. And I wanna try to hold our feet to the fire. In other words, are we gonna require fencing for the existing junkyards that we have? If so, what is the general time period? Are there grants available? Have we researched for grants? Screening? Are we gonna try to do that? If so, are there grants away? Fluid drain sites, are we gonna see if they are incorporated in the existing junkyards? I think we need to really get down to some of those difficult and uncomfortable topics. We haven't asked for availability of grants yet, to see if there's something out there. That's it for me.
Anyone else have anything?
Well, let me tag on to this, because in, hidden in this, in the one in Pickens County, there's a certain time period where certain things have to be done. So if we're gonna look closely at Pickens County, we need to address these things, and I think just in a general topic.
It was one, uh-
Okay, well, I was trying-
Hundred eighty days?
Can I say something? Okay, so I was trying to get my head around, what is, what are we gonna do? What, you know, and what is it that motivates us? So, I'm like, okay, the question is, you know, what is the problem with junkyards? When you, when you think about junkyards in our, I don't even know how many there are, but if you start thinking, well, why are we even talking about this? You've gotta answer the question, what is the problem with junkyards? You know, in this Pickens County, one starts off with the findings, and that would be one way for us to get started tonight, is to look at each one of these findings and see, do we agree with that, or is that something that, um, we need to talk more about?
All right. Well, let's do that. If everyone's in agreement, let's take the first one, provides a necessary service to the county residents.
Sure does.
Does anybody have anything to say about, you know, that service?
I mean, it's, it's a vital service apparently, because people are, have junkyards, and they're making a living somehow with that business, but does anybody even have an idea of how many junkyards we've got in our county? Somebody willing to take a guess? I don't know. More than ten or less than ten?
It's less than ten.
Less than ten.
Okay.
Commercial, licensed, actually commercial.
Let's be upfront, this is all we're talking about, is commercial junkyards.
There were three? Something like that, I think it was, it was five and under that we have in the county. Now, we have a lot of so-called storage places that look like junkyards, but, uh-
We're not talking about-
We're not talking about those right now. Uh, all right, number two, contribute to the economic, econ, ah, economy and the tax base of the county. All right, number three, poses a potential hazard to the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the county. depreciates the value of the surrounding property.
It can.
It don't necessarily do that, but it can do that, depending on how good the facility's run. All right. All right, breeding ground for mosquitoes and other insects, snakes, rats, and other pests. Does everyone agree with that one?
Potentially so.
And number five, poses a potential threat to, of injury to children and other individuals who may be attracted to the premises.
Call it an attractive nuisance.
That was one of the things we had discussed before, um, the safety-
That and hazardous is why we got into it to begin with.
Right. And number seven, are a visual blight and a, let me read here.
Appreciative.
Appreciative?
Yep, to the, yep, to the aesthetic.
To the aesthetic quality of the environment of the county.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Could be.
Yeah.
So number, number four and number seven, we're saying can be, or something like that, can be a, can depreciate the value and can be a visual blight.
It depends on how, how good the business is run, 'cause I know the, I know two, or at least two that are run, and they're not, I mean, yeah, they're junkyards, but they know they're not junky. I mean, they look decent for what type of business they are, so, uh, anything else?
Okay, so at least we've agreed to that first section there, but maybe we should go on to the purpose and say-
Mr. Chairman, we can just kinda clean this up just a little bit, and maybe through the form of a motion to adopt this as part of the ordinance that you were drafting and accept. And then the only other thing I would add for this first section, is there anything else that anybody would like to add to it through findings, or, um, if you'd like to officially change the wording of four and seven to can, and then we can kinda clean it up and we can incorporate it into the definitions you've adopted previously and start building it.
All right, do I have a motion?
Why are you looking at me? Huh? You grew it down at your end of the table, okay?
I would move to, um, accept this, um, this first section as-
Okay, I would move to accept this, this first section as agreeable to the commission and with, with the changes that we've made.
Adding the word can and to four and seven.
So it's going to have to be can be a visual blight, can depreciate. So, so anybody second it?
Second. All right, any further discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Yep. All right, just, do y'all want to move on to the purpose at this time or do you want to take that at the next meeting?
Can I, can I have some discussion, sir? Again, sir, you gave me, okay, thank you. This is an article already adopted from a neighboring county gentleman and obviously being enforced and must be agreeable to the citizens of that county. I don't know why we should critique it. I don't know why we can't accept it as is.
The answer to that is, there's some things that I think the public did not like.
I'll tell you why. So, section 1072, part A, the purpose of this article is provide for the regulation of existing proposed junkyards under development standards ordinance. Here's the definition of junkyard. Junkyard shall mean any location, including a residential area, establishment, or place of business, is maintained, operated, or used for storing junk.
Now, it's a good ordinance, but we do need to go through it and critique some of the stuff out of it that doesn't apply for this county.
Whole lot of stuff that falls in junk. This is going to get deeply into property rights.
That's why I said we need to critique it and go through it.
Unless I'm missing something.
Well, let's hold off on the purpose till next meeting, give y'all a couple of weeks to think about it, see what y'all want to come up with something different.
Well, I don't, as homework, as opposed to, well, yes, looking at that second paragraph, but maybe also highlights some areas where there are definite conflicts within the county that we can bring up next time, that these are definite conflicts, these lines, so that we can determine what we want to take out.
Mr. Reed?
Just one comment, and I think this would help, help things. I know you didn't invite me here to talk about the junkyard department, but the rest of the unit anyways. Just saying junkyard is a Freedom of Information Act deal, just saying junkyards in your agenda is a little bit too succinct. You need to give the public notice, as specific as you can, of what you're going to talk about so they are apprised of it and have the ability to appear and speak on it if they want to. So I know y'all have been talking about junkyards, it makes sense where y'all are postured on it now, but someone who just looks at it, I have no idea. I'm saying go outside the bounds of anything, right? But if you can, if you're going to frame this up for a discussion at your next meeting, something along the lines of discuss developing a junkyard ordinance that regulates the operation of commercial junkyards in Oak County, consistent with the Pickens ordinance or something like that, the more specificity, one, it'll anchor y'all's conversation, but two, it'll also get folks who maybe just be wandering around in public and see what y'all are going to talk about, like, hey, this is interesting to me, and I'm going to be there. Just, so it's not necessarily to the heart of what you're talking about, just a preliminary kind of FOA matter.
We've already done that. I mean, we've already had community people come here and discuss it, most of them were recovery operators, record yards, storage yards. I think we appeased them that we were separating the businesses from, you know, from storage yards to the junkyards or the salvage yards.
And we have at least one junkyard. Don't interrupt, please.
Yeah, yeah, but I agree with you, Gary, and, but again, we're trying to reinvent the wheel.
Mike Smith?
I want to make a motion that we search for grants for screening or for fencing, see if there is some way that we can do that. That was a lot of support for that.
Yeah, I agree with you. Everybody shook their head.
That was a motion, so he needs to second it.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose?
We have a grant person that's.
All right, as per Mr. Johnson's request, let's look through this ordinance, see if there's anything.
About homework, not today, Ms. Mayor.
Yeah, not today, but for homework till the next meeting, by the next meeting. Sort of look through this Pickens County ordinance. If you see anything that doesn't fit in this county that, or you just don't like any ordinance, please highlight it, come back to the next meeting, and we'll discuss those highlighted sections first and go from there. All right, do I hear the famous motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
David, thank you.